We call the roll, please.
Farmer.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. Okay, as you know, we're all here for a workshop today to discuss the second phase of the Hoke Road development. So, turn it over to Amanda.
Yeah, that's fine. We have Mike Murray here, who is our engineer for this project. Mike came a few months ago, almost probably about a year ago, and gave us an update on Phase One. If you don't remember, this is a project that we got federal grants for in 2020, or actually it was 2021. We applied in late 19, received the grant in 2021. And it is for a congestion mitigation plan for this site. We had looked at both a stoplight and a roundabout at that space. The people, the engineers up at ODOT, recommended the roundabout, so that's what we've moved forward with. And I'll turn it over to Mike, and we can kind of go through the slides that he has prepared.
Thanks, Barb. Good evening. I'm Mike Murray with Arcatis. We formerly were IBI Group, so some of you have known for quite some time. Our name has changed a little bit. I'm the same person. We're located in Columbus, Ohio. And like Amanda said, we've been working on this for quite some time. In terms of, I guess I'll talk a little bit about where we're in the process, first of all. So, we had just submitted Stage Two plans, which call it 60, 70 percent. At the same time, we've submitted right, the final right-of-way plans for approval. The next step is to begin right-of-way acquisition, which is out for, request for proposals to get a qualified, ODOT-qualified firm to do that work. I'm not sure the timeline of when that will, when that comes in, but.
About three weeks.
About three weeks. So, they will be selected by the city. At the same time, there'll be a final approval of the right-of-way plans from ODOT. That's happening concurrently right now. After that, the next step will be Stage Three plans, which is about 90 percent. We'll get some comments back from ODOT, but we kind of consider them done or very close to done. Then we have one last round of approvals. That is June 1st. Then, the final engineering package will be due to ODOT on October 1st of 2025. Meanwhile, somewhere between, call it May 1st and October, there will be the, the right-of-way team will come on board, and they'll start their process. It's more than a year planned for right-of-way acquisition. ODOT has a formula based on the number of parcels and a couple other things, and how they schedule that out. Right-of-way acquisition activities are scheduled to end at the end of 2025, and then the project will be ready for bid in early 2026. Not exactly sure timeline. ODOT's fiscal year is June 30 to July 1, you know, June to June, not a calendar fiscal year. So, when they talk quarters and sale dates, it's a little bit different. And I don't know that they've nailed down the final sale date quarter yet. But it'll be somewhere in '26 that this will go to sale for construction. As Amanda mentioned, the plan is to construct a roundabout at Hoke and Winger. We did a preliminary engineering study 18 months ago or so, looked at both options. The study came out scored better through ODOT and through, through the ODOT process, which has a scoring, scoring system set to it, and that's developed the roundabouts. Since that happened, we went through Stage One plans, which was about a year ago, that we somewhere in there, and a little less than a year ago. And we've gotten through Stage One plans, and then Stage Two plans. This, what you see on the screen, is an overall of the project, just to kind of give everybody a feel for where it starts. It starts at the, roughly the intersection of Smith Road. It goes north along Hoke Road, through the Winger Road intersection, about 300 feet north, give or take. And then there's connecting tie-ins on Winger to the west and Winger to the east. It's a one-lane roundabout. So, as you come up from Smith, there'll be the traffic light at Smith for, for what to me is the Walmart intersection. And then, there'll be a two-way left turn in there, so that people coming and going, coming will have the ability to make left turns. So, it'll be three lanes through there. Then, as you approach the roundabout, there'll be a splitter island that then directs you into the roundabout and takes you counterclockwise or clockwise, whichever way you want to go. Same thing happens from all, all three, all four approaches.
Do you have a better illustration to show residents, the map, just from that angle? I mean, it's hard to really see. But do you have a better illustration for a map that we can see the actual roundabout and how it's going to be directed?
Yes.
From Hoke and Winger, and which, which way it's going to be?
Yes, I've got another slide.
Okay, thank you.
That zeros in more on the, the roundabout itself. Really trying to show overall time, project limits and project scope of work.
So, for right-of-way, is everything within the, in the interior of the purple lines, that's going to be developed for the roundabout?
I'm going to apologize and tell you that I'm colorblind. So, what you call purple may be blue to me.
Okay, bluish-purple.
The line that says TMP, and then just, that's a temporary right-of-way construction purposes. Inside of that line is the permanent right-of-way.
Okay.
As part of this project, there's a, a multi-use trail on one side and sidewalk on the other.
So, Tina, your aunt's house would be the one on the left? Is that, I can't see the street names to see where.
So, Winger is north, is up, so the drawing is rotated, so right is east, pardon, right is north. West is top, east is south. I apologize. South starts here down at Smith. So, Smith is here. That driveway takes you to the Walmart, the plaza over here on the other side. This is the park, Dinglewood Park. And then, coming forward, this is going northbound this way.
I see. Now, thank you.
No problem. I apologize. So, there, like I said, there'll be, part of the grant application was a shared-use path, and part of the grant application was sidewalk, and that's part of obtaining the federal funds. We, we worked with ODOT quite a bit to keep the footprint as tight as we could. But those, those are part of how we, how the money is acquired. The money's acquired basically from congestion mitigation and a little bit of safety. Safety is how we ended up at the roundabout over the traffic light. Well, in congestion as well, because traffic lights bring people to a stop, so that creates some air pollution that the roundabout does not. The roundabout, from a safety standpoint, takes out con, direct conflict points, reduces your conflict points, and reduces the severity of the actions when you get the, what I would call the sideswipe or the T-bone. The removal of the traffic light removes the rear ends of people approaching. So, there's, once people learn the roundabout, and they're pretty common these days, they're not, I mean, they've been around 20, 25 years now at this point. It, it works pretty well. This roundabout's sized a little differently because of the semi-rural condition it touches up against, so it has to be sized for, again, ODOT, for certain farm equip, to make sure we get certain farm equipment through there. It's also sized for approximately the I-70 for semi-trucks.
So, one.
The single lane is the way it stands right now, correct?
It is.
You're not up for suggestions on a double-lane roundabout, just a single lane? Just the concern was coming from CTC with the bus line that goes all the way to 40. So, I think that was the concern that we had brought up last year.
So, so it is a single-lane roundabout. That is confirmed. We're tied down. The, the geometry has been, been approved by ODOT. At Stage Two plans, where basically all the design components are complete. So, that's why we're at about a 70 percent. And then, the last 20, 25, 30 percent is coordination with you, with existing utilities and proposed utilities, as well as finalization of the quantities of things that we're going to build. So, this is, this is, I'm going to use the word locked in, but that's not, this is the, the final design.
But, but one lane, since it is equipped to handle farm equipment and semis.
Correct.
One lane is defined as maybe a little wider than a normal one lane. Like, like, if we look out at Old Salem right here, would it be the same width as one lane of this road out here, or would it be a little bit wider?
It's, it is the same width. It's a 12-foot lane.
12-foot lane.
Yeah. The 12-foot traveled lane. And then, sorry, I didn't realize I had to quit. So, as you can see here, this is a, the zoomed-in version of the roundabout itself. So, you have three 12-foot lanes as you approach that become two into the concrete splitter island. And then, as you come around the splitter island, that allows you to, it's, it's still a 12-foot traditional traveled lane. The geometry of the circle, inscribed circle, is how we deal with larger pieces of equipment as they come through from a radial perspective. And then, this hatch shaded area here is also, is designed to be mountable. It's still curved, but it's mountable for large vehicles that looks something like this here. This is a, not exactly what we're proposing. This is just to give you an example of what that looks like in real life, with some colors and some photos to it. So, going back to here, like I said, there'll be the, the three lanes in all three, in all four directions. We'll approach the splitter island from south, north, east, or west. It'll be, it accommodates school buses, it accommodates farm equipment, it accommodates trucks. But it's still a 12-foot lane that is, keeps, does, gives it the, does not give it the feel of like it's just, it's wide, wide open. It's still a, a traditional 12-foot lane like you would have on, on Teywood or on Salem.
Or like maybe the ones that they've put up all over Butler County? Are you familiar with those? Okay.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That's a good example, Kenny.
Yeah. We've done several of those.
They're all over down there, yeah.
Yeah, they, I bet they're probably up to 25 or 30 at this point. So.
Yeah.
They do about one or two a year at this point. And they've done them in front of schools, they've done them in, so, so yes, that's, they're designed for that, to accommodate the larger vehicles, but not, and, and not give you the feeling.
So, the pathways, where does that go? So, does it go on at the outside of the blue or purple, whichever color you're referring to? Or, I mean, I, no, I didn't know.
I was more laughing from my colorblind.
That's okay.
It's inside, it's inside the line. So, you'll have your curb.
Okay.
Then you'll have, so going northbound on the right will be the sidewalk. South, if you're going northbound, the right would be the sidewalk. Left is the, is the path.
And we can get blown-up versions of those, Tina, like for every individual property owner, we can get that blown-up version for them.
And as part of the right-of-way acquisition. As, as part of the right-of-way acquisition process, the, the right-of-way firm will send, they'll send a letter to each per, person in the corridor that this project is coming and the explanation of how, how the process works. They send them a letter. It used to be called, when ODOT contacts you about, about right-of-way, I don't remember what the form is called anymore. It's got a different name to it. And it won't be, it's ODOT, but it's still part of the process. They'll meet with them, they'll have individual drawings with them. A lot of times, they're color-coded. Green is grass, blue is pavement. Here's your, here's the existing right-of-way line, and maybe yellow. Here's the proposed right-of-way line in green. And there'll be big blows for every individual parcel. They'll meet with them individually. The first thing they do is they do a title commitment review. So, they'll make, they'll, they'll go through and do a review of who owns the property, make sure it matches up with the owners and the property map. That, that's the very first thing they do. Then, they do an appraisal of the property for fair market value. Following that, then a negotiator will reach out. In that, as that process is going on, the negotiator will reach out to the individual property owners, set up some time to meet with them. The negotiators have parameters defined by the city as to how the offers, players go back and forth. They meet, they explain the property to them. They probably usually meet more than one time, two, maybe three times. Could be more than that even. It just depends on each individual property owner. Sometimes it's a little, if it's a rental, or if it's a commercial property, they're, they're a little bit more complicated just because of there's not meeting with probably the person that's there every day. So, again, it's a process they go through. They make an offer, they go back and forth, and then there's a closing. So, all, and all of that happens before construction. So, that's what the next 14, 15, 16 months will be about, give or take, each individual property. So, even though I'm saying right-of-way would start in a month, there's those pre-steps with the title commitment and the, and the appraisal. There won't be immediate. It'll be several months before the residents start to see some discussions.
Thank you.
I used to have lunch at a place in Troy, which was a block away from the roundabout up there. And, and all of the locals and the old-timers, they said, "I got to get out of here before that school lets out, and I got to get around that roundabout before all those damn kids get there." They didn't use that exact language, but it was, basically is what they were saying is, what about, and Troy High School is just about as far as Northmont is from this roundabout. Not to mention the CTC going the other direction.
The difference, Tim, I think you're talking about is the Troy, the Troy roundabout is a double-lane roundabout, what Tina was talking about earlier. And that can be very confusing for a lot of, a, a lot of drivers that, even the ones that are used to driving it. You know, now, it used to be you had two lanes and you had to yield to the right. Now, everybody yields to the left like a regular roundabout. And you have to be in the center lane to make sure you're going all the way around, and it confuses drivers like crazy.
There's still four ons and four offs, though.
I, I understand, I understand that.
There are four entrances and four exits.
A good example of what he's talking about, this exact roundabout, is at Troy Christian School, which is at McCague Road and Dorset, McCague and Dorset. And I thought that would be an absolute nightmare. When they put that roundabout in, I thought, there's no way that's going to work. That was a six-way stop right there. And when that school lets out, I thought, there is no way this is going to work. I've never stopped at that intersection. It's a single-lane roundabout just like that. And as you come up to it, if there's nobody to the left, you keep going, and nobody stops at that intersection hardly at all. So, that's, that's more of an example of what this will be versus the, the double-lane one that's at Troy.
Exactly.
So, we don't have to go to Northmont and teach the kids how to handle it then, huh, Randy? Okay. I have one other question. The, the lot on the northwest corner of Winger and Hoke.
Yes.
When we put the water in to go to the high school, which it went to the village of North Clayton at the, at the time, but we, we destroyed their well, and I think their septic tank also. And, and I don't know how much of their land we're going to take now. And that was a long time ago. You might have been involved in it, Mike. I don't know.
It was around, but I, I don't have credit for that one.
Yeah, because I heard from her father quite a few times about some of the people up here. He wasn't very happy either, let's put it that way. How much of her ground are we going to have to take?
So, you can see the, the purple line and.
I think that's the only, what you all have to talk about is, is that wall.
The northwest. Yes. So, that, that's determined on, you know, you can, the inside line is the right-of-way line. So, the, the inside line there is the permanent right-of-way line, and then there's the, the line behind it, which is the temporary right-of-way to less to tie things in for construction. The inside line, and I say inside towards the center of the intersection, is the one that we're going to, is the one that we're, we're, is the acquisition piece. I will mention this project is also bringing water up through here and sanitary up through the project. So, that's, that's part of the project as well. So.
We already got water, but it comes all the way up to the school.
But it brings water from, from there to the south. So, I'm sorry, it's just towards, towards Smith. So, we tie into the station to the, just right where that, that, that house is on the northwest corner. We come down and go that way, go south.
That's important for a developer's standpoint. If you don't have water, that brings up to that point, then developers might shy off. So, it's an important feature.
It's less than 100, yes.
Right.
The water's also for fire protection and just to loop the system, which is an improvement. Sanitary is an improvement to get off of a leach bed system. All those things are encouraged beyond just development as, as part of just.
And I think Mike's group was part of the goodwill as well. And if I remember right, there was a little argument about that, because they didn't have water in sewer. They actually are on septic over there, or they're on a leach, or leach field, as they are out there together.
Either way, that'll be very close to that house. I mean, it's already pretty close.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
So, again, as you can see, this is a little bit more of a blown-up of what the outlook, it'll be the one lane like we talked about, the splitter islands, kind of getting it out, transitioning people back into the, going north, the two-lane section. South is the three-lane section. So, we don't have backups for people wanting to make lefts and rights, and lefts into their house if they're going northbound or southbound. And that's, that's the, the plan for the project at the moment. So, like I said, this is just to kind of give you an idea of what the roundabout could look like in terms of that, that, that island apron. This has some minimal landscape in it. That's one of the things that we haven't finalized yet in the Stage Three plans. It'll be determined. There's also going to be some street, decorative street lighting that'll improve it. Those are other things that we're working through right now. Those, we know they're planned, but as far as like what they'll look like, the vision of the, the aesthetics of them, those types of things, that's part of the next step between now and the end of June. Been talking with, you know, with Amanda and with Randy, talking to some suppliers, getting some ideas of what our options are, what they would look like, could look like, those types of things.
Does the diameter have to be that width? Does that have to be the diameter, or could it be smaller, of the center island?
Talking about, I'm sorry, I'm not, is the inside diameter or the?
The inside diameter of that concrete center island, does it have to be that width, or could it be smaller, so the lane is bigger there?
Basically shrinking this section down smaller is what you say.
If the outside diameter is the, is what directs the traffic around, if we wanted to bring in, if you wanted more.
Less island, I guess.
Yes. If you wanted to move this curb that way towards, and you could, which would increase either this in terms of whatever material you, you have. Some of this is here, like I said, for the, to deal with some of the larger vehicles, so they don't cut the corner type thing. But, you know, if you wanted to start, let's say you were going to put turf instead of this, you could, you could go further is what, if I think that's what.
Yeah, thank you. Because I, I mean, that looks like a pointless piece of gravel pit. So, having it smaller would make more sense to me, but.
And again, that, that's part of the things we're working through right now. This was just to kind of give everybody a, a vision.
An idea, yeah.
What it would look like. And I, I kind of wanted to be cognizant of, this is, would probably be the starting point. If I show you something that's much more grander than that, like, you know, with, with stones and those other things, and we, and that doesn't work out, I don't want to mislead that we thought we were getting something, you know, a little bit more aesthetic. So, at this point, this is just a stock photo that we use to kind of show more of the island, what the structure would look like and how it would look.
The, the outside measure is really the important part because of the buses and the, and the.
Correct. What happens if that's stone? If it's turf, if it's, it could be all brick. I don't think that I would recommend that, but, because the visual change in the texture does have alert that, you know, does help alert people that that's what's going on. But, and it'd also be the most, you know, turf would be the cheapest and, or less, least expensive. So, it's, and landscaping helps it kind of, you know, create a visual barrier, all those types of things. Again, it's just, just kind of give everyone a feel for what it would look like.
What else? Any other questions from the council at all, or?
I have a question. On your first map, those neon green patches, what are those?
The trees you're asking about?
Are those trees? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, one of the things, this drawing was used for a variety of things. I just like it because it shows the entirety of it. And there was a tree count done as part of the process of the, of the really in beginnings of the environmental documents, part of the congestion mitigation stuff that we do. So.
And Mike, a question. On the sidewalk side, is that going to be a temporary easement? Will that be a permanent easement when, when it's just a sidewalk? Because a lot of times, I mean, these people know that residents are in charge of their own sidewalks once they break.
The sidewalk is in the right-of-way just like it would be in a plat. It's no different as far as how it, who maintains it, and that's, that would be basically about how your ordinance was.
I didn't know, because of the 10-foot, obviously, the 10-foot walking path is going to take a lot more right-of-way than the standard sidewalk. So, I was trying to figure out who was going to get, you know, how that breakdown was going to be.
The way that, the right-of-way lines are set and the way the federal document requires it is that those improvements have to be in there, but as, as they would be in a platted subdivision, if it's a five-foot walk or a six-foot walk, or, or, you know, in downtown or whatever. As far as who maintains what, and that, that's, that's by your ordinance and how your sidewalk and your, and your shady path and some of those other ordinances.
That, that will definitely be a discussion, I'm sure, for those people that didn't want the sidewalk. Which, which was part of the grant. We wouldn't have got the grant if we wouldn't agree to that.
And we, we went back and talked to ODOT and said, you know, because there wasn't, there was a public involvement period at the very beginning, and there were some comments about, "I would prefer a half sidewalk, maybe stronger than I would prefer." And those were, were through with ODOT and, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, depending on your point of view.
Anything else from council?
These are all preliminary prospective drawings for what's coming up, correct? These are, I mean, the layout's finalized, but I mean, the other things, the aesthetics aspects are preliminary.
The, the design engineering part of it is pretty much done. The aesthetics, the finalization, some of the details, those are not done. And so, correct, that the selecting, like, like the, the streetlights that we talked about, selecting some of the potential landscaping components in the roundabout, those aren't finalized. Those are still items that we're working through between Amanda and Randy and ourselves, and then staying within the ODOT guide, guardrails.
In, in any time during this process, do the people that are affected by this have an opportunity to provide their input as far as some of the aesthetics, as far as street lighting and other things, as far as what would be coming in? Or are they informed as far as what's happening, so that we don't be caught off guard?
Yeah. So, I don't think that, I don't think there are any rules with ODOT that says that there has to be community involvement. But I think once we have a slate of items that are available to us that are within those guardrails, we're going to bring them back to council to take a look and see what you guys wanted to do.
Well, I just know because there are, you've already said, you know, there are persons who did not want sidewalks and this sort of thing. I just giving people an opportunity to have some information coming to them as things get closer to happening.
So, at the beginning with the public involvement period, there, there wasn't a formal way for residents to provide their input. There is not a formal system at this time of where we're at in the process. But I think as we go forward and we select, and I'm going to use lighting as an example. Here's an option. Here's three different potential options. Again, because there's federal money, we cannot specifically say we want to use that light, but we can guide the, the selection of light to be, in terms of the type and style that we would prefer. And then, there has to be a couple of different options for different purposes. And it has to be US-made and a couple of other things that happen.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the standpoint, even if it's informal, that we have, that people that live in the area have an opportunity to act, since it's been a time period, since the initial time with you've been involved. You know, if it's been three years since they've actually had the chance to actually have some comments, that as this gets closer to happening and things actually being put in place, that they have an idea as far as what's coming in, they actually, if, as far as how it's going to happen.
During the right-of-way process, because there'll be a, a more detailed explanation of what is coming, they'll see exactly, a better representation of their property as well as the overall project. You know, it's kind of a sit at your kitchen table and show. And by we, I mean the right-of-way acquisition. And I think that opportunity will then present itself again for, you know, tell me a little bit more about the streetlights. Tell me a little bit more about the sidewalk. Tell me a little bit. It's a, it's a very back-and-forth informative question-answer type thing, above and beyond just, you know, we're here to acquire some right-of-ways. It's, it's an explanation. It's another opportunity to explain the property, the pro, part, project to the property owners throughout the process. So, it's, it's, there was a touch point at the very beginning, like you said, and now there hasn't really been much of a touch point. There's about to be more touch points. So.
Yeah, I just think some things might go easier if there's an opportunity for people to actually get a feel for what's happening, when it's, when it starts happening. Even it's not part of the normal process, it's just that we bring, bring people in, but they have an opportunity to have some, aware when it's happening, they can actually come and see and hear what's happening.
Talk about, we'll figure it out. So.
Anything else from council? So, the residents that are here tonight, you'll have an opportunity to come up to the podium and speak during the visitors' comments of our regular meeting. But I'm going to kind of break protocol and say, does anybody have any kind of quick questions for Mike? Why, why it's fresh in your mind? If you do, now, you know, you can speak up now, or you can wait until, what is it?
In terms of construction, like with the old one. So, construction commences, like I said, it's, it's in '26. I, I think that they're probably going to estimate a 12-month construction window, plus or minus weather, all that.
It starts in '26.
Yeah.
Are, are the provisions being made for utility loss during construction period for the residents of all here? Yeah, I mean, you start digging up the road and stuff, electric lines are coming down.
So, there will be utility relocation that occurs both before, to move some things before construction starts. And then, there is utility relocation that happens during the project. They always, the intent is to have no outages.
Right.
And, and if we have to, to minimize them. Some of it's the constraints of, they're not dating powered light anymore, but to me, they're dating powered light. You know, it's their facility AES and how, how that system is set up. There's less redundancy if you're at the end of the system than in the middle of the system. So.
Well, it looks like a lot of poles are going to be coming down.
There will be, there will be a significant number of poles that will be moved before construction starts. Formal constructions, before formal construction starts.
What else? Anything else?
So, is that pathway like for bikes or is that what the pathway is?
It's a, it's a shared-use path, yes. So, it could be non-motorized transportation. So, you can ride your bike, you can jog, you can push a stroller, that type.
You can walk, all kinds of, it's a multi-use pathway now.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Basically, basically, that multi-use path will go right down that side, and then Phase Two will connect it right to the 40 path. So, they'll be able to take the 40 path right all the way to Walmart on a 10-foot wide, just similar to that same path.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone in the room?
No.
It just goes to there, that 300 feet past the roundabout?
Yes. It's a, there's unplanned, unfunded plan to go, or I shouldn't say it, not unplanned, unfunded opportunity to go north that has been. unfunded opportunity to go north that has been studied in the past, but is not currently funded and I don't know that there's, it's.
We'll apply for grants for that as well.
Yeah.
It, it was very favorable for ODOT. I never liked putting words in their mouth, trust me, but it was a very favorable project because every time 70 shuts down, where does everybody go? They take Hoak and that road is not built for semis, it's not built for white traffic, and there's no doubt in my mind if we got Phase One, they're probably going to fund Phase Two.
Yeah, the idea would be go all the way to 40, so.
Well, they approved it once anyway, Randy. It's been approved in the past, but we decided not to do it at that point in time.
Give the money to CAT as well, wasn't it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. That money went to CAT project.
Correct.